Okay, the time being six thirty.
I did it on my iPhone.
I call the Ashland Planning Board meeting for Thursday, May twenty second, two thousand twenty five to order. Ledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and um I know roll call has already been taken. Moving down, we are going to um change the order of discussion a little bit tonight. Um first thing is Mr. Daniels and his tattoo parlor. Please, come up and tell us about it.
So, my name is Daniel Roberts. Uh I have been a professional licensed tattoo artist for almost five years now. Um I'm looking to basically branch out and open my own spot um here in town. Um and I'm sure I can assume what everybody's thinking when they hear tattoo shop. That's exactly why I want to come up here and do my own thing.
I don't have a problem.
Which you already got.
I'm pretty sure.
Um without going into my whole life story, uh I've been clean and sober since two thousand twelve. Um there's a lot of tattoo shops that are not conducive for that kind of lifestyle. I wanted to come up here, I have a friend who owns a suite in a residential or commercial building up here. He's agreed to sublet one room off to me. Be one person in, one person out, there'll be not a lot of foot traffic, it's appointment only, I don't like dealing with a lot of people at the same time. My basis, I've never done anything like this, so I'm kind of falling into my seat of this.
So, so let me ask a few questions here and get you directed. You're going into a commercial area already deemed by the town as commercial.
Yes.
You have ample parking in that said commercial area, which is at twenty-three West Street in Ashland.
Correct.
Um it's easy in off the interstate, you all are familiar with twenty-three West Street, I'm assuming. Um you have your state licenses.
Thank you.
And you have all your health and safety licenses.
Um.
Well, you will prior to your opening.
This, that's kind of one of the things I was coming here to figure out is exactly what I needed.
Is just your state licenses?
The old, so the old.
So whatever the state requires for you for licenses is what we require. Um building inspectors, anything else that we require?
That's actually, I was gonna comment on that, there are no other requirements and it does meet the zoning. So it is a, a, a good spot for it. And I think also the location is such, we've talked a little bit about this before.
Right.
And location is such that you're not gonna have a congregation of, of people there like if it was a, a, a main street, street front.
Right. Right, and like you said, it's appointment only, it's a commercial building set up for commercial use, he's a commercial person going into a commercial, he has his state licenses and everything. Um the police chief has no issues with it. Um so as far as I see, I don't see any problems with this. Does any board member have anything to discuss on this?
No.
In which case, we will send you a letter saying you're good to go.
Perfect.
Um but as long as, the letter will say you will have to have all your state licenses in place prior to your opening.
Absolutely.
But.
Did you want me to send copies like we talked about in the email?
Yeah, we would love for you to send the copies to the land use secretary, just so we can keep it on file with you.
Alright, right.
Okay?
To luck your business.
Thank you.
Good luck.
When's your opening date go?
Um, um, yeah, it was kind of all contingent upon this. Um I'd say probably two, three weeks out still.
Bike week?
Who asked me?
I don't do anything special for Bike Week, yes, again, that's not a crowd I wanna, you know.
That's fair.
Just, just some people, they don't tattoo well.
Yeah.
No, there are a lot of good people over there.
Alright, well, thank you guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Welcome. Thank you.
Can you send him a letter?
Yeah, we will send him a letter of decision saying that.
A letter of decision?
Yeah, saying that um he just needs to file his state um licenses with us prior to opening. Alright, Tom?
Evening. So I just want to address the board briefly uh about recreation vehicles and trailers being used as residents.
Not a seat?
Um, I'm trying to say.
Sure.
So, um, but thank you. So, the issue's been brought up on a couple different fronts. Had a, a owner of, of a property in town that vacant land, he'd like to put a, eh eh, put his uh fifth wheel trailer on it and use it temporarily as a residence over the summer, as well as he's looking to build a, a permanent home and was asking about possibility of being able to live in it while construction is underway. And our zoning right now is silent on any use of recreational vehicles or trailers as a residence. Uh there's also been an issue that has come up, and Chief and I have talked about it, uh of some complaints of a property where um we feel that there are people living in, in trailers on a long-term basis. And so we, oh again, we want to do some enforcement of that because there are a number of different issues. First off, the state of New Hampshire specifically require, has specific requirements on sanitation, so if you have water coming into a trailer, even if it's just you connecting a garden hose to it, you have to have some regulation of that going out and that can, for, or, or even if you have a house that is um you have water coming in, even if you have a composting toilet and you're only using gray water, you still need to have septic system.
Hmm.
Case of a trailer or RV, you can't use it determined, uh interchangeable. You need to either be connected to a working sewer or, or septic system or you need to have a holding tank that is pumped on a regular basis. And so, uh, so we get, give you, want to deal with that requirement, we want to deal with life safety requirements of people who live in it on a short-term basis. And as, as uh well as just being able to, to regulate it so that we know where it's happening and we're able to keep track of it. So absent anything in zoning, which is, this is one of the, the many things on my kind of wish list of zoning pages. Uh the uh, the planning board can't adopt a policy that can take effect until such time as we work out uh something in clause zoning, so.
In your packets, what he's talking about, you have a memo of?
I have a memo that put up, it's in your packets. Uh I researched what other towns have done and talked with other building inspectors. Um also, it's, it's part of that package on it is a just a sample of a permit application form uh that uh the town of Barnstead uses. So on a sh- uh what I'm looking for right now is some type of short-term regulation that we can put into effect so that the chief and I can have some enforcement and control of the thing, as well as being able to give some guidance to the, to the town, so that when people ask the question, can they do this? We, we can have
Questions.
A, a framework for it.
Policy.
So, uh, and so I put together a recommended kind of loose uh starting point that I'd like the board to consider.
Oh.
And I understand that this will need to have under in public hearings. But I would ask that the board act on it in a timely manner so that was coming into the, in summer season. It's kind of more prevalent and uh we'd like to be able to take some action on the problem cases that we have in town. Questions?
Is anyone circling typos over there?
I, I just did real quick and I, my G, or my, my keyboard is stuck, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a habit.
That's okay.
No, this is great, yeah.
Charlie, go ahead with your question.
Tom, how do we get the warranty temporarily in term, what, what's the criteria?
Well, that, that's a really good question, and basically it's, it's, we define it. So, some communities will say that up to seven days or ten days, seven or ten consecutive days of use, uh up to that point, you don't need a permit. Uh also, some towns, Plymouth, their ordinance is up to, you'd use up to a hundred and twenty days in a calendar year. I don't like that because it's so tough to regulate. And, and it's, well, okay, well, you were there last night and you were then, you were there, you know, so how do you calculate those hundred and twenty days? Some will say that the per, some towns will say the permit is good six months from the date you get it.
O- OCP says May first to
May first through October thirty.
October thirty first.
Yeah.
You can do it anytime during then, can't do it during the, the cold winter months, and, and there's a good reason for that. They have a lot of the mobile home, they have a lot of mobile, uh, not mobile homes, they have a lot of transient um people that live there, and that's why they did that. Um and it actually works out quite well.
And then just to follow up, uh with further thing on Charlie's question is Plymouth and I believe Barnstead, they will say that if you're building a home that you, you can have a permit for up to a year during construction. So, so there's basically kind of the short-term, like a week or so, there's the midterm of up to six, six months, and then there's the longer term if home was under construction.
The bigger issue that I s- I honestly see is the um sanitation issues. So, in, in the question for which I think the chief is and, and the building inspector and the questions I have, the sanitation becomes a major issue where the, where the home or the mobile unit is parked next to a river. And they do not have a running septic or a functioning septic and they're getting water eh, at best we'll say from the river into, into it. And this creates many health concerns.
Isn't that handled by the DEA also?
No.
Why?
Because they are understaffed and overworked.
It's DEA's regulation, but they look to the town to enforce it.
Right, we're the enforcers of it.
Uh in some of the communities, they, as part of their regulations and their permitting, they require that on a monthly basis the person submits receipts showing that the tank has been pumped.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, right.
It's a great idea.
Nope.
Yeah.
What is um the campground off of Route three in Holderness? What is where they're kind of, cause I know they have like a permanent structure there where there's
The campgrounds are.
The town campground?
No, not our town campground, but the Holderness campground, cause I know they allow up to a certain date, like they've.
Campgrounds fall under a different category?
I know, but I don't know if, if the one in Holderness is underneath, that the whole thing is underneath the campground category is what I'm saying.
I believe it does.
Because I think they have all, they have year-round tenants as well.
Oh, and, and so, so, no, no.
They're tiny, but campgrounds are treated separately.
So a campground is allowed to have year-round tenants. Pro- but they have to shut down for a specific period of time, which can be two weeks or four weeks, and that is regulated through the state camping association. And they would be exempt from this.
And then one, yeah, one thing else, just real quick, then I'm gonna leave. What, most of the communities, pretty much all the communities that I've researched, they also say that it's for non-paying guests.
Okay.
So you can have, you you know, my, my, my father-in-law used to pull his trailer up and spend the summer in my backyard and um and you, years ago and so, or if you want to have your friends, you want to use it yourself, but you can't be renting it out.
Renting is a.
Which is also one of the issues that we suspect with uh the situation that we're, any complaints about that we want to take action on is that they are renting out these trailers.
Oh.
So, uh so we want to eh have something that it says that it's for non-paying guests only. What do you think?
So, yeah, I think my concern comes out of that, which is that my impression is that the town will set up regulations and then when someone violates them, there's no backing to actually enforce them. And I would hate to see you in a position where we set up a policy and someone messes around with it and then you don't get any backing to hold them to account. So I guess my concern is, you know, and in a way, that's outside of the purview of this board.
Right.
But are there actual mechanisms so that, for example, you could tell someone you have to move out or something like that, and who would support your enforcing that?
Well, I think that, that, that's, that's a really good question, but because there, there are things in the, in the state RSAs that give the, the town basically some, some teeth to be able to enforce these and uh to uh to place uh enforcement policies like fines or, or just the ability to be able to force the people out.
Yeah, I think my question is more is, is there, is there the will to do that?
Right.
Well, so there, um, we're going through a similar process for something else right now.
Hmm.
And the process would look something like they're issued, say, something, sometimes we notice like a cease and desist order.
Hmm.
So if they've overstayed their, their timeline or they're not abiding by whatever the rules or regulations are, then they would get issued a cease and desist order from the town, through town. Uh and then if they don't stop, then the town can then issue fines and or go immediately to court.
Okay.
Uh and taking the court in that matter, and there is standing and backing for all of that stuff.
Okay, good. Now, that was just my concern, cause I just would hate to see you in a position of, you know, they're violating it and then you don't get the backing to carry out the enforcement of the policy.
Well, and I appreciate that, and that's one of the things Chief and I were talking about is some of the other issues that we have in town and that we that we have to have a discussion in, in the town that you know, if we are going to start down this path of enforcement on some of these
Hmm.
other properties that are in violation of ordinances, two things, one, we need to commit as a, as a town that we are gonna follow it through.
Hmm.
And, and secondly, we also have to have uniform enforcement, we cannot be selective.
Correct.
For this, for this issue specifically, I can think of off the top of my head, three or four different residences right now that are utilizing uh anywhere from an RV, small RV, to um like the size of like a Toyota.
Hmm.
To up to like um a full mobile home residence that's still on wheels with attachment to it. Something that you might see like in the campus.
I was just gonna say.
Residence.
Yeah.
And those folks, the two that I'm thinking of in the, the, the big uh mobile homes, they've been there for as long as I've been, working here since two thousand and two.
Yeah.
And obviously well before that, and they've long-time citizens, never caused a problem, never an issue. Uh but if they meet the requirements for this, then they would be forced to take some type of action.
Well, are people who move in, what's the equivalent of a tiny home on wheels and then build a foundation around it and don't get permitted and nothing happens? So it gives a very mixed signal to other people in the town.
There's a couple of fifth wheels in there too in town, and I know that people are living in, on a long-term basis.
Yeah.
There's a handful of, of, that would meet this qualification, so to speak.
Right.
Uh that, again, that's Tom and I were talking about, about, Tom and I were talking about, about pre, a, a different separate matter. Uh it would have to be some type of a universal understanding that if we address one issue, we have to make sure that we're addressing another issue.
Right.
Complaining against, uh, to the town about another matter, uh with junk cars and trash and things of that nature. And I said, we have other, we have other residents in town that certainly are worse than the one that's being complained about, but the people that, nobody's raised a stake about it, so it's just been allowed to continue. We then have to take action on these other residences that haven't raised an issue or been a problem or received any complaints. If we're gonna take action on one, we have to take action on all.
Right.
Now, if we implement a policy, sorry, just if we implement a policy and these other places have been there, are they effectively grandfathered in or what?
They are not effectively grandfathered necessarily, depends on how we write the policy. It also depends upon, on what we decide the policy to be as far as setup. You know, like I was saying earlier, my, my big concern is, is going to be the, the septic issues. If they have septic which is running into a septic and they have water and it is insulated certified for, for winter use, then that's a different story. So what I would suggest is that we, one person from the board sit with Tom and write up a policy for our site ordinance that we can put into effect for now, also sit down to write a zoning ordinance for a change to the zoning plan. We're having a s-
I'll volunteer to help with that, with understanding that I know virtually nothing about that, so you're gonna have to get me up to speed.
I, I have no problem with that, I can I can
Okay.
Send you lots of different towns' ordinances and what, and what they have.
And, and if possible, I'd like this within two weeks.
Okay, so.
Cause I'd like this to be on the next agenda.
And I would uh love to have this on the next agenda so that we can expedite this and get it in place.
Is the board agreeable to that?
Yes. Okay, I, I'm willing to help with that, if it's a lot to look at, we may need to sit down and just churn through it, you know.
But the point I'm gonna, the starting point is, I'll shoot you an email with links to some of the other different communities that I've researched and we also had discussions with other building inspectors. Um but we'll at least send you links to some of the other different towns' zonies, so you can take a look at it.
Particularly the one you, ones you think of as best practices.
Yeah, and there's, there's also, frankly, right now, I, I'm trying to differentiate between trying to get an expedited policy into place versus a long-term zoning, because there are some things that you may want to consider for long-term zoning that again, that uh might be a little more restrictive, but we, but for right now, we just want to get something in place uh so that, you know, we, we can, we can take some action against some of these properties.
Charlie, should you guys look at that also quickly before we implement anything?
There'll be a public hearing and everything, so there, there will be actually two public hearings.
I just don't.
So they'll have opportunity to also talk it. Um we're looking at implementation probably the end of July.
And also, just so you know, I had a discussion with the board of selectmen on Monday night about this. And they, they uh were supportive of it and wanted to, but felt that it was something that needs decision of this board.
Right, and we, we deferred it to this board for, you know, the specifics, so they, being that the select board really doesn't have the expertise and actually the, the, the charter here is really to
Yeah.
Make the recommendation work with the building inspector. So yeah, that's best with that in it.
Okay.
Alright. In such case, we shall move on.
I'll uh shoot you an email and then we'll talk.
An email or do you need?
Oh, I do, no, we.
Okay, right. Have you guys? It's been a long day. Need an email or want a third head, let me know.
Yeah, so, so why don't you join him as the third head then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't wanna have.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have like the big committee on it, but certainly.
No, just, just the three of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. That brings us, I'm gonna skip down to the compact area. Chief?
Yeah? So, the, the map that you sent me.
Yeah.
Where did that come from?
I, I came up with that by going, uh properties that were two hundred and fifty feet um around the, the area most. So maybe you should explain to us what, what it is that you're looking to accomplish.
Well, so um this all started several years ago when Andy and I uh started working on rewriting some of the town ordinances. Uh specifically, we had some issues with the firearms and the fireworks piece of it was worked into the same ordinance. Uh and that ordinance was adopted in sixty-eight. Um so way outdated, it lists residences that I have not been able to determine who, what those are, so it's for all intents and purposes, it's completely useless, it's unenforceable. And I brought that to the board's attention as fireworks were the hot topic of it, because every Fourth of July, I try to remind people that the town ordinance, basically what it says is that you can't shoot off fireworks in this town, period. And that always ruffles some feathers around the Fourth of July, and then my phone rings a lot and I get a lot of emails and a lot of hate speech and it's. So I've been trying to rework these for quite some time now, several years, and the last time this was brought up with Andy and I, I think my last time presenting it in front of the board was, I think, December eleventh of twenty-two. And at that meeting, it got tabled and then it just disappeared for a while, and it hasn't been brought back up since. And then I was on vacation a few weeks ago, I had a voicemail from Andy saying that apparently you guys had a conversation.
Yeah, Andy wanted it brought back up.
And he was going to, uh, he said Kendall's gonna reach out to you to talk about this, so here we are. Um so the compact part of town um is often used to describe the heavily, heavily populated area of town. By definition, the only definition for this in the statutes comes from the unauthorized use of a firearm statute, where it's clearly defined in there, I don't know if you guys have that, but I will give you a quick synopsis of it because I have it right here. Um some packet from twenty twenty-two. So, compact part of town uh means the territory within a town or city comprised of the following. And there's a bunch of stuff about non-residential and commercial buildings um and talking about a perimeter of three hundred feet of, around such buildings without permission of the owner. Uh so that's more for the um, again, commercial schools and things of that nature, where you can't do the stuff within three hundred feet around that building. Uh parks, playgrounds, outdoor public gathering places, does anybody interested in body of the city or town? And then here's the, here's the crux of it and the part that really comes to play for us. Any contiguous area contains six or more buildings which are used as either part-time or permanent dwellings in the spaces between them where each such building is within three hundred feet of at least one of the others plus a perimeter of three hundred feet wide around the buildings in such an area. So basically what it's saying is if you have six buildings in an area and however big that area is, and one is within three hundred feet of another, um that constitutes a compact area. So by definition, that is the definite, that is the definition from, from the unauthorized use of firearms. So what can happen is towns will often kind of more narrowly define that. Um so we can, in certain cases, we can narrow down, in certain cases, we can broaden and make them strict. Um but we can't expand the state statute, so we can't like override the state statute and say, well, you can go shoot anywhere you want. Uh because obviously by statute, you can't do that, uh statute says you can't. But we can make it more strict, so we can say that this area, although is not technically by definition three hundred feet, six buildings, blah, 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 um we can still say, well, this is still an unsafe area in the town's eyes to shoot firearms, you know, shoot fireworks, do whatever it is that this defining piece meets. So once the town identifies that compact area, then they can use that for pretty much any ordinance they want and basically say, we've defined the compact part as such here, and we're gonna pull that and use it for this purpose, whatever that purpose is. And so it's kind of an over, overpiece where we can articulate the compact part of town for any other state statute that it may fall under because it's defined in this one. So we can't say this is a compact part of town and yes, you can shoot it. Or we can say this isn't by definition a compact part of town and you still can't shoot it. Using the firearms as an example, right? So for instance, we go to the top of Highland Street. If we decide for any reason because it's overlooking of the interstate or it's overlooking the school in certain directions, we determine that that is not a safe place to shoot a firearm, we can incorporate the top end of Highland Street to wherever the town decides to designate that as still part of the compact part of town. But we can't make, we can't make that more broad. So some of the areas, and again, the emails that I had with Kendall were, and I, I don't know if they all got forwarded to you to see all the writing. Um there are some areas that, again, I. There are some areas that again, I, I made it very clear, I did not take any measurements when I proposed some changes to the, to the map. I didn't go out there and measure anything out to say, well, this is two hundred and ninety feet and this one's a hundred and fifty feet. But from my knowledge of town and from looking at maps and everything else, there were certain areas in there that I had identified that would probably still make sense. For instance, there are some spots where there are just these big gaps. You know, like, there's this big gap here where we're kind of like going around it and then up here, we're kind of going around it in different ways and over here, like this is Main Street, like Dollar General's right there. By definition, all of this falls into a compact part of town by definition, but we haven't included it in the map. So we can't, I mean, we can still use this designation as what we're, the town is defining as a compact part. But I can tell you right now that if somebody shoots a firearm off at Dollar General, I'm charging him with the state statute for unauthorized use of a firearm. By not defining that as a compact part of town under the town ordinances, I have, my, my discretion has been completely removed to charge that person with a town ordinance. So even if they don't do something maliciously and it's just an educational piece, I can't go to them and say, I'm gonna charge you, this is, this is egregious enough that you deserve something. And I, I, I can't char, I could if this was. Across the street here at the ballpark, I could hit you with a hundred dollar fine, arbitrary number. Instead, I have to charge you with a state statute and file a violation level offense against you. That has other penalties that come along with it. It's usually a higher fine because town ordinance is usually smaller. Hell of a lot less to prove if it ends up in court, um, where it's a violation of the offense, so it's still not even that serious. But if you were to, if we were to adopt this for other stuff, then it could become a factor. So my recommendations in the map kind of went by what not only fit the statutory requirement, at least at cursory kind of face value without surveying and measuring and all that kind of stuff. But it was also some other areas that seemed to be not a great safe place to shoot, uh, like Ledgewood. You know, that doesn't technically fall into the statutes as a compact part of town by definition, but I would prefer people not shooting that way.
They used to in the eighties.
There's over five hundred acres, uh, over fifty acres there.
Well, but, I mean, again, you can draw a line kind of wherever you want. It doesn't have to be like the entire length of property all the way back out in the woods. It can be, you know, according to the parking lot layout, you know, or like draw a line around the parking lot, whatever the case may be. So the old statute, I'm sorry, the old town ordinance, um, I can't even pronounce the name of the residence that they use as a reference point, but nobody has been able to tell me where that residence is. And that was part of the reason why this was all brought up, because it just, some of it didn't make any sense. So.
Do you have that ordinance with you?
The old one?
Yeah.
From sixty-eight? I do.
Would you recommend that?
I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Well, again, I can't, you, you can, you might be able to figure if anybody could, it would probably be weird. Lyablonavitz. You tell me, Kendall.
Down right there.
In the other piece about that statute, the, sorry, that town ordinance specifically, is it keeps making reference to the village, but the village is never defined. So I'm sure back when this, obviously in sixty-eight with the mill town, it was all basically just that down, compact downtown part of town. Uh, but nowadays, that doesn't hold water. And so we have everything being referred to as the village. And I said, can anybody, when I brought this up to the board, I said, can anybody tell me what the village is in town? They're like, oh, well, this or that. I said, can you tell me where that, where it says that? Uh, no. Can anybody tell me where this residence is? And everybody's like, I don't have any idea. So how can I enforce this? Like, I can't use this for anything. So it's, it's, that's how this kind of started a few years ago to try to update some ordinances. Because, I mean, sixty-eight, it's just everything is just.
Who should judge updating all the ordinances?
Falls under the different committees, different people. Anything that has to do with planning, we are.
Okay.
So.
So am I understanding that, that working from the draft maps that Kendall had proposed, you're suggesting just some modifications that would cover things like this area of Dollar General and so on? Just so that you have a fair ground on what you're doing.
This was what I had sent back with all the red and the hash marks as kind of being a, you know, a very, very rough.
Oh, you sent this back to Kendall?
Yes, this was a very rough kind of outline. Without any, you know, no numbers involved, just kind of roughly like this is an area and then this area would be areas that I would be interested, like for instance, the, the co-op right over here. I mean, very, very clearly, I mean, very compact right there, and that's excluded from the town ordinance. And that's this whole area right here. So that whole from, from the town line up really by definition fits the, the statutory definition for a compact part, again, without taking measurements, but we know that the co-op for, for sure is. And then probably the, the residence right next to Popolato, and then there's a, another mobile home next to that.
Right. So this had from, from Main Street. Right, from Main Street all the way down to the New Hampton Town Line.
And then I had, um.
What, what is the paper?
This is the nineteen sixty-eight ordinance.
This is the one.
The existing ordinance.
This is the one that I had, and I don't know if you have copied that. This is the one that I had given, um, that I had given to Andy back then saying like, here's kind of a, an outline of the different boundary markers that I kind of would have, I would have recommended. And then on like Highland Street, you can see I just, I put a line there for a number. Like, I don't, I don't know where we want to draw the line for the, the house number or whatnot. Uh, but that was just a very rough draft. That was just me basically taking the old one and substituting some areas into it. And then there's the map that I had kind of drawn up real, real roughly last week with the, in a PDF, just to kind of outline some areas.
I think this needs to add a few words to.
I'm sure it does. There's, there was, again, it was just kind of a rough outline to, to give the board some ideas of what we could and couldn't do, and we could adjust it as needed. Uh, there was no, it wasn't a hard use for anything else that comes up down the road. So. Frankly, I mean, it, it, all it does is it makes, it makes, uh, by defining this, it makes the, the board, all of the board's decisions, um, a little bit easier when they do have to reference this for whatever reason. Uh, but for enforcement purposes, uh, when it comes to somebody not doing something maliciously and it's more of an educational piece, but there has to be some type of a penalty for it. Or you give them a warning the first time, tell them to knock it off, and then we go back again, well, okay, so they shot a, a twenty-two rifle off the back deck to kill a chipmunk or a squirrel that was eating out of the burfier, you know? Does that, does that quite need for them to go to court over a violation level offense? Or do we want to educate them and hit them maybe with a town ordinance because it's the second time? You know, if we have, if we don't have this, I have to go with the statute. If we have that, then I can go with the town ordinance, um, once that's defined. So it gives us a little bit more discretion, a little bit more options to work with. Uh, whereas if it's obviously if it's something malicious, we just hit them with the state statute and we'd be done with it. And we'll probably tack on a couple of other things in there too. But for, for our purposes, for town ordinance purposes and for board purposes, once we define whatever it is that we're gonna define as the compact area of town, then we can use it for so many other things once we get there. And I'm totally open to anybody's idea of the concept.
Lindo, you have a question?
Yeah, just my, my, my impression from what you're saying is you're building a little bit outward from literal density of population to common sense additional areas where somebody could get hurt if things were shot. So whether or not it narrowly meets the, the density criterion, it's really more in your experience here in town.
It gives us a little bit more, it gives us a little bit more option.
Yeah.
Uh, which is always helpful. Um, and I mean, some of it, I think, just, it, it, you know, I mean, like to include an area that actually meets the statutory definition, um, or, you know, some of these areas are darn close if they're not quite there. You know, I mean, that three hundred feet, I have no idea where the state came up with that three hundred foot rule, how that was determined. It was determined many, many years ago.
How far does a bullet fly?
Uh, it depends on the angle, what's in its way. It can go a long way.
They say it can only go three hundred feet.
Oh, no, they can go a lot further than that. Military weapons can shoot well over a mile with accuracy, so. That's what the, the snipers in the military are accurate to about a mile out with a Barrett fifty. And a turned user.
Well, just wanted to get a perspective on this. So basically you're saying there is a state statute, so, so that, it's not like we're not covered?
Correct. We are, we are absolutely covered. Uh, but in terms of, if we're gonna use, we would have to, in, in a town ordinance situation, if we, if we don't have a town determine the compact part of town, for town ordinance purposes, we would have to.
Rely on the state.
Rely on the state statute.
And what the state doesn't define as a compact area, we wouldn't be able to have enforcement. Is that, is that correct or?
Not under, not under this part of the statute. So we would have to come up with something else if we're gonna charge somebody.
Well, like, let's do that. Somebody should start shooting off a gun there. Do you have any requests unless there's a town ordinance?
Uh, we would have to go with some other type of state statute, like a reckless conduct statute or something like that, uh, which holds a much higher penalty. Um, and so, uh, yeah, we do have options for sure. But it wouldn't, the state statute.
This will allow him to give discretion where necessary.
Well, I'm thinking of that line of it, but I'm also thinking about all the other boards and all the other stuff that could come into play with this, uh, where if we don't define something, whatever that may be, I don't know how different boards, zoning planning, whatever the case may be, selectmen, uh, would then reference some type of a compact part of town. If, what's even necessary.
Yeah, okay, what, what, what else would apply?
I, I don't know enough about the zoning and the planning boards.
There are this, where is compact zone referenced in our materials?
It's not referenced in our materials. So this would be in addition to our materials. It is referenced in town, town ordinances.
In the new disorderly conduct ordinance.
Right, the disorderly conduct is the big one.
So if we, if we relabel some of these areas compact zone, is there any other things that are impacted on those properties besides firearms and fireworks?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
So Kendall, I believe it's referenced in zoning.
Not, not, I don't believe so.
I, I haven't seen it, because I, I have.
It's referenced only as something that we'd wanted to do.
I think the concern would be like animals.
Right, does it limit other things that we need to be aware of?
When you say animals, you mean if there's a predator or anything?
Chick, chickens, goats, cows, and so forth.
Does it impact on?
At this time, it does not.
I would just wanna be sure of that.
Yeah, we would just wanna, we would just wanna make sure that we're not impeding on others' rights. I think we'd have to look into that, but if it's not documented.
But it's, there is no documentation in our zoning or, um, site plan that references that with animals. In fact, we don't really reference animals at all.
So I, no, I just, what I wanna make sure, if we don't have a, if we can't look and say if we're, if we're deeming all of this area compact zone, what, what other things might be impacted on homeowners' rights?
I guess that's what chief is alluding to later on, if there's changes in zoning.
Right now, it's nothing.
Correct.
So it's literally, if we made these changes, it's just in these areas, you are not, well, you're already not allowed to do fireworks, right?
Well, by town ordinance, the town ordinance piece says no fireworks at all.
Okay, so then.
The way that that's written.
So we're really just talking about firearms?
Uh, well, so the, the, um, fireworks and firearms ordinances are being rewritten. So that's kind of what's been prompting this whole.
State or town?
Town.
Town.
Who's doing that?
That's what Andy and I have been working on for the last few years.
Okay, so then truly, we are, we are confident that the only thing that will be impacted are those things. So just, we wanna make sure we know other things that could be like a sweeping impact, right? So if it's just those two things.
Only those two things.
So does, does this broaden? I mean, if you have the compact area, you can have fireworks there. Does that mean outside of those areas, now you can have fireworks?
It depends how the board writes, writes the town ordinance, because the, the town ordinance has to be rewritten one way or another.
Yeah, but right, right now, it's, it's across the board.
Yeah, so what, what happened was in, in the, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna leave the rest of the town open.
If it's in this one or if it was in. Yeah, so, so what happened was, I brought this up, this is from nineteen sixty-eight.
My neighboring neighbor's.
Doc, come in here.
About discharging Kendall.
That's what I'm gonna go and get my cannon.
And then here it says no fire or discharge in the, and this is a fireworks. But I pointed out that that semi-colon right there is identified.
Yeah, we can, we can adopt this, this, this.
And we should just.
Fire and discharging.
No, 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 no. I think that there was like some confusion when this came up last year. I think it was just genuine, genuine confusion. That it would also impact you from having like specific kinds of animals on your property if you were deemed compact.
But I think that's covered differently by the zones in town. That village zone, you can't, and rural residential.
Correct.
So I think that's covered by a different.
Right, a different animal, literally a different animal.
Yeah, but I think that, that's protected by the zones in town.
So, um, you, you wanna work on getting one together for us for two weeks?
Sure.
If you guys are good with that, Bethany will, Bethany will work on, on getting together a compact zone.
Can you forward me chief's?
I will.
Ideas and everything like that, and then I will.
A compact draft.
I mean, I'll go out and measure and everything, I don't know.
Yep. I will forward those to you.
Yes.
Forward those to you.
Yeah, you got a copy, right?
Yep. Yep.
I only have one copy yet, but I've already emailed it. So I have more copies. It's on my computer. If you want it, you can have it.
No, uh, Bethany.
You want it?
I'm gonna, so Bethany is going to work with you and get a ordinance together for us for the next meeting.
So this is the original, these are.
You can actually make sure I don't.
Oh, I know, I can. It's called Google ruins.
Well, that, but, but you can do, you can do it on the town.
I know, I use that too. That, um.
So this is the original ordinance from sixty-eight.
I remember this one.
You were here when I wrote it. These are the maps that Kendall gave, and then that was kind of the very, very rough.
I was here when we did the college.
Very clear, that's very rough. That is, that is not by any stretch measured out in any way, shape, or form.
But does this move in the direction you need?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's.
It's maybe sensible moving forward.
Because it was, it was kind of just tabled and forgotten about for a few years. And so we've just kind of operating on what we've been operating on, uh, and just kind of working on the state statutes at this point, uh, which doesn't give us a whole lot of leeway. Um, so it, it helps us define things and then we can, we can before.
Well, that sounds like the way things are, and this maybe goes to part of what, I think part of what Charlie was saying is, it sounds like right now you're kind of cornered. There might be something you'd like to issue a lower fine, but you can't. And I could imagine that putting you in kind of a bind.
They can, yeah. I mean, sometimes, you know, the state, the state statutory fines are so much higher than the, the next equivalent that we might have for a, a town ordinance violation. And they can be just so significantly different that it's like, it just doesn't make sense to issue it. And it, it's, it, it's not fair. Uh, you know, and we'd like to be able to have that option, uh, to, 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 to have that be a way to work with the residents as opposed to just saying, uh, you're out of luck, here's a five hundred dollar fine. Uh, as opposed to, we could issue a, a fifty or a hundred dollar fine, uh, to, you know, set the precedent, this is, this is not okay. You need some type of penalty, but I don't think five hundred bucks is, is reasonable, that seems for what happened.
So to reflect your judgment more accurately.
We, we try to.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so if you were all in agreement, Bethany will work to get something together for us. And she'll talk with the chief and everything as needed. Okay?
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Are we gonna, do the mother?
Thank you. Do drop in. Update on do drop in. They have met with the state food inspector, they've passed their state food inspection. They are, um, doing all their stuff that they need to do to keep themselves open to December thirty-first. They are aware that on December thirty-first, um, that they will most likely be closing until such time as a zoning ordinance change has occurred, or if they go before the ZBA and get a variance. Whatever, it's up to them. They have the paperwork, they, it's in their court.
That's a good question.
You may.
Given that they went before the ZBA and got shut down.
As you, as you, as you were informed in your classes.
Yes.
We do it without prejudice. And they at any time can file a new application. They were told when they met with the ZBA that they could file a new application and. We do it without prejudice, and they at any time can file a new application. They were told when they met with the ZBA that they could file a new application and come forward.
If I can confirm that it was without prejudice that, that judgment was rendered, so they, they can come back.
What the outcome is will be determined at that time.
Yeah.
But they can be open till the end of the year.
Yes.
Yeah, and we're really looking for um the planning board to resolve this situation, uh in a, in a way that's constructive for the town and the people involved. And, and just so that, well, make sure the planning board understands that the zoning board felt it was put into a box with this issue. Because the granting of it, it was a special exception they were asking for, a lot of variants. Would cause harm to another resident, another business that was nearby, okay? And, and that's the piece where the zoning board felt that, that this, this can't go forward. Okay, now, where the zoning board, you know, I guess I'm speaking for, for the board here. Wants the planning board to, to change the zoning so that this disparity goes away. That it becomes possible, you know, a lot, if you change the zoning, then you, do drop can operate, if you make it a commercial zone. But there's a, there's, we need the, the lifting of a grandfather clause to the, to the other resident or the other business. So that they no longer are subject to harm when, when the do drop is, is in operation. So we fully appreciate that. We're, we're looking for a solution to this, okay? Because if nothing happens, we're, we're in the same box a year from now.
And this also puts us in the same situation that Tom was talking about earlier and you were about enforcement. I, I had counted seventeen businesses that were in operation in this zone. And then Barry Gah came to us and told us of two more additional businesses. So that makes a total of nineteen businesses that are operational in a zone which is not zoned for that. Which is why I bring forward to you that we make a zoning ordinance change to make that a mixed-use zone.
And that was really the map.
We did talk about this last year, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, but we were talking much more sweeping changes, which I think the board wasn't comfortable with at that time.
Right, the, the one.
Wait, hold on, sorry, are we allowed to talk about this without them here because there's no application? Is this appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Yes.
We are, okay. Um, so I think that there were concerns around like the sweeping side of like.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about the zoning changes, we're not talking about an individual business.
Correct, I know, but we were talking about changing a good significant area.
A whole stretch along there on that side of the river.
We can change as little or as much as we want.
Okay.
But we do have to do something for this coming year.
Yeah, okay.
Well, hold on a second. Do we have to do something?
We don't have to.
The situation will remain unresolved, and, and I'm going to.
That specific situation.
Give you the advice that it's unlikely that the zoning board is going to see this differently the, the second time than it did the first time. If the underlying zoning issues are not dealt with here and of course by the town. But so, you, you know, we, we're just running on a treadmill, i- i- if there's no action taken here at the planning board.
How is the other business affected?
The other business is affected because the property value will decrease. And the reason it would decrease is that business is grandfathered for a specific purpose. It's not like a commercial property. If, if the owner were to sell that land. It could only be operated as a ice cream store, or you know, that, that type of vending operation. Okay, which if there's competition next door in that same business, that diminishes the value of that property.
You mean if they decided not to just sell ice cream?
They can't decide not to just sell ice cream. That, that, that's the only thing they can sell there by, by ordinance, who is grandfathering.
No, no.
It was always, actually, it was always food and ice cream. I know Tracy's girl has.
Well, this, this gets, it, it could be food and ice cream. Now, but even that, because they haven't done it in such a while, you know, could be contested.
So, so you're bringing up a really good point, that the grandfather ends when they have not done it for a, a period of time. And they are very close to that period of time.
So they just.
That's right, and it could be contested. Um but even if it's food and, and ice cream, it's still, it has a, is an immediate competitor. Right, and therefore, as opposed to, that property was sold as an exclusive use because it was the only real property allowed to sell ice cream in the area. So when do drop in opens up, now they've got a direct competitor, and they can't do anything about that.
But they don't sell ice cream at do drop in.
Food and ice cream, you know, they're, they're in competition.
Alright.
Okay.
Um, Tom.
I have some couple of quick comments to make. One is to get to Charlie's point about ZBA. And the decision may not change because basically you've got, maybe a finding of facts.
Right.
And that's what the decision was based upon. And so if do drop comes back and re-applies, that if, at this current time, they're, the facts that they based their decision on are unchanged.
Right.
So therefore, their outcome and their decision is gonna be the same. You know, uh so there is the issue of, and one of the, the facts is, is how it's going to affect other people or businesses in the area. So as long as uh the grandfathered uh business is still operational or uh or within the timeframe of where they can revive the business. Then that's, that's still gonna uh affect the, the finding of fact.
And, and that's good, Tom, but let me think, the real, this is kind of not understood too well. The zoning board doesn't care what businesses operate there. That, that's not, we're in the property business.
True.
And the, the problem is that the property that the other business stands on loses value. Because it is restricted in use and has now uh direct competition. It's, it's no longer has the exclusivity that it once had, or it has by zoning. Okay, you know, by, by the legal zoning.
And that changes if we change the zoning, how?
If you change, the, the thing that the, that I'm hoping the planning board will do is will make, take away the grandfathering of that property and make it a commercial property. Or, or mixed.
The do drop.
No, the, the.
Tracy's.
Tracy's, the property that Tracy girl operates on, okay? Now, that is, it's, it's no longer impeded by the operation of do drop because it's, it's legally competitive. And if the Tracy girl, the property owner decides they wanna open a shoe store instead, because they can't make money selling ice cream, they're free to do it. So that there's no longer the, the diminishing of that property value by do drop having an operation nearby.
So, so it's, so the request or from the zoning board is to look at those two properties, not to look at a sweeping area?
Oh, that's, you know, we've asked, from the, the zoning board's position is to please resolve this, this conflict if, if, if.
If it's appropriate.
believes it should be resolved.
If it's appropriate.
Yeah, you know, if you decide it is, because other than that, Tom's absolutely right. If the facts don't change, it could be hard to change the zoning board's decision.
So a couple, a couple of questions. When we considered this before, one of the things we wanted to avoid, as I recall, was sort of spot rezoning. And so Kendall, you had proposed sort of a much longer stretch to be mixed use, and at the time, we.
So, so we have.
Were too easy with that, but are we, are we sort of suggesting to revisit that?
I, I would suggest that we revisit that because we have other commercial property that is on that road. Do drop is not the only commercial property, zoned commercial. There is another property which is zoned commercial on that, in that strip.
You, you mean zoned residential?
No, I mean zoned commercial.
But do drop is residential.
But, uh, so.
But it would just, that, I think.
Tracy's girl is not the only one, I'm sorry.
But I think if we, if we, to follow up on what you're saying, if we did that, then nobody could accuse us of selectively trying to advantage anyone. So I think it makes more sense to make a broader decision.
And.
You know.
And we have a trucking business there. We have a uh other, other businesses as well that are there.
And then I think the other concern, as I recall, that we talked about, is we wanted to have some restrictions on the kinds of businesses that could go in. So that we wouldn't end up with sort of strip mall.
Correct.
And so I think that's the other thing I would suggest that we think about, right, that we, that we sort of, that there be a certain scale and scope.
Right.
So that we're not just opening it to anybody who wants to.
And that's why a mixed-use zone makes sense to me. Because you, you are looking for the smaller businesses that blend in with houses.
So mixed use is something where like a, a hotel, a three-story hotel couldn't be built there?
Correct, because first of all, we have to define mixed use, it's not perming in our zoning, it's something which we would define. In that proposal I gave you, hotels were not allowed. So we're talking only single, single and two-story buildings that are of so many square feet. I mean, we can limit it to no more than a normal house size, which is twelve hundred, fifteen hundred?
But I have a couple comments to make when you're done.
No, go ahead.
Let me just real quick, uh, I think as part of that, being able to, to have some control over what is done in, in that, is also. You, you don't make it as a matter of right. That, but you make it that it's available by special exception.
Right.
So that therefore, they have to go in front of the ZBA, and the ZBA can review it. Because if you make it just a matter of right.
Right.
Then they can come in with, with anything. And, and Plymouth just recently uh changed their, their use table on their agricultural zone. Which is about sixty percent of the, the mass of the, of the town, because there were so many permitted uses. And they were finding a lot of things were coming in and just clunking down that they did not want. So they changed a lot of those uses to either not permitted or by special exception. So it can be regulated through the ZBA by special exception. But the other thing I also uh want to point out why this is, in my opinion, critically important is because right now, we have a, a pretty. You know, red flag of a business that the town has, has said, you do, you, you do not have the right to operate. You need to get uh a, a special exception from the ZBA. They applied from the ZBA, they were turned down, their appeals period ended, and we let them continue to operate. And from my position as code enforcement officer, as pro-business as I am, and I, I really think that's a credit.
It is a problem.
I agree with that, but then, but just like fix, fixing the problem for them isn't the right thing either if we're, if we're not enforcing it.
Right.
Because then you are setting a precedent of you can come in, you can be denied, and then we, you're still operating. So instead of enforcing it, we will change the rules to make it more feel.
Well, but I think, but I think that it makes, I think the stepping back from just the do drop in.
Mm-hmm.
I think it, for me, from my standpoint, it makes sense from the, from the town's standpoint. To make that stretch of Route Three, mixed use by special exception. Uh because right now, the town only has, but ten percent of the tax base is commercial. That is, of, there is already has a substantial amount of commercial use there in that area.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And um, and it, and it's, it's a, you know, good spot for.
So Tom, basically what you're saying is the do drop in pointed out a huge red flag or error in what we have written. So let's address the error that was brought up because of it.
Right. Right.
Right.
Right, not that we're giving them an exception.
But we have to be like ca- cautious about that.
I absolutely agree with that.
Because the way that it, like, that sounds right.
We just need to make sure that we're freezing it. Other way sounds like, oh, we're not enforcing it, so we have to fix it. No, that's all.
So it's all in the way that it's.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I.
It's like looking at other properties, you know, that in there, these other properties that I've been talking to people about in town that. I think of are uh critical areas of commercial development.
Mm-hmm.
That should also be looked at being rezoned. And without getting into specifics, but so that they can be, that, that there are areas that are not completely zoned commercial. That we should, and in looking at the rezoning over the next year, uh changing some of these areas so that they can be commercially developed.
Well, and I think to build on that, I also think we wanna make sure we don't accidentally leave loopholes in place that can be exploited by the kinds of developments. We don't want coming in, number one, I name no names. Number two, um if we do this, if they have a deadline, let's say through the end of December. Is, is there a way of putting something functionally in place by then? That would allow the zoning board to say, come to a different decision? Or can it only be through a warrant article that could not go through till next March?
My understanding is it only can be done through rezoning, uh because.
Which is a warrant article.
Which is a warrant article.
A warrant article, but again, I, I think of.
It could be next spring.
March.
Yeah, the al- the alternative is enforcement, shut down do drop, do drop in.
Right.
You know, in other words.
But this letter says we can't, right, from the state?
Well, you know.
Well, or can they go through December thirty-first and then just choose to shut down until the town meeting of a warrant article specifically?
You know, that letter, that letter specifically.
That, you know what, in, in the zoning board's point of view, that, that really holds no water. If you ask the zoning board, they're gonna tell you that the business should be shut down.
Mm-hmm, sure.
The decision was made, and we're the town, and we need to enforce.
And nobody enforced it.
Yeah, totally agree, but who's supposed to be enforcing it?
How?
Well, the slot, the slot.
The select board, and they, they.
Technically me.
He, he is, but he was told by the slot board.
I was told not to.
Which is.
Enforcement.
And I have uh a CYA letter.
Tom, that's smart, and it's smart.
It's very smart.
Because I, 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 I'm very pro-business.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that the town is in a very precarious situation.
Yeah.
By allowing that business.
I think you can be pro-business, Tom, and still have pro-expectations.
Yeah.
Right.
But in any event, moving forward here.
So, so just.
We have to, we have to just, we have to talk about it, because it's gonna be.
We have to talk about it. It's going to be a project. As Tom said, there are a few other areas in town that would also make sense, but we're gonna do thi- this first, then we will talk about those.
So as far as action, next steps, what, what are the next action steps that need to happen? What?
We have a very busy year.
Which is, well, we just start early.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's already halfway done, almost, so yeah. Okay.
Cause if you have thoughts on areas, and I know Kendall had proposed this one, so we have that as a potential starting point. What can our next step be so that it is sort of moving along?
The next step would be that we come up with a proposal of a geographic area. Followed by a written um proposal that will be presented to the board, uh to the um voters.
Well, let's just do it all in one. Let's make the compact area.
We, so everything will be going to the voters at the same time, okay?
Yeah, right.
But it's not going to them until March, you said?
Correct.
You can't, because it's.
So everything, everything will be having um some public hearings. And then everything will be going to the voters. The, the um, the thing Tom's talking about with the RVs, we will do now and put in our, our um site plan regulations. And then we will follow that up with a zoning amendment um later on. Um, the compact zone and the uh, and the mixed-use zones, those all have to go before the voters.
Which means public media, public hearings and so on.
Public hearings, meetings. So we will um, first, we will tackle this subject. Route Three area. How do you feel about where a mixed, mixed-use zone with requiring a variance? Are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay, I will write.
So point of order, uh special exception rather than variance.
Okay, special exception, okay. I will, I will work and get something written up for our next meeting on that.
Well, let me, can I, any comment on what Tom's saying, maybe to make it clearer? If you zone it as mixed use, it's, in, in effect, you can have commercial businesses.
Correct.
Without.
That's a good point.
Without a special exception, okay? Now, so if you do it mixed use, you don't have to make restrictions to commercial use.
Correct.
And, and then the zoning board is in a position where all they have to do is issue a variance.
Correct, that, that is my intent.
With special exception.
But do we have to write anything specific in there where the building can't be huge and.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And make Route Three look awful.
Correct.
So Kendall, you're gonna write a mixed-use.
I will write a mixed-use ordinance um for, for the zoning regulations, to be added to the zoning regulations. I will write a mixed-use ordinance, um, for for the zoning regulations, to be added to the zoning regulations.
Okay.
Section two of the zoning.
Well, and I think the other reason this is important is that I assume that Tracy Girl would find it very upsetting to have all of this rezoned. Especially if they feel that a particular business is being given preferential treatment. So I think it's really important that we think of the whole stretch.
My my intent has has absolutely nothing.
She wants to change too.
My intent has absolutely nothing to do with with any specific business. It really honestly has to do with making that area compliant with our zoning regulations.
No, and I think that's the right way to go.
Flags that are there, there are, there are at least seventeen of them. The one that, the one that bothers me the most, to be honest with you, is the Marina. The Marina is zoned residential.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That is not a residential by any sh- any shape or form.
No, I agree.
That needs to be zoned. At least mixed use, if not commercial. And now that we know that there are at least three different businesses in there. Even more so.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. Well, just, it it's, it makes the ordinance match the reality.
Right.
And it opens the way for others not to have to sneak around, and so if we're also trying to get businesses to come into a directory. It would zone things in a way that they don't have to hide and they can do it openly, so it all sort of lines up.
Yep, exactly.
So in the meantime, with Dewdrop in. Do they get through the end of the year or do they not?
That is, that is, that is not our problem.
Okay, never mind, okay.
And I just have one very last quick thing to say, and I think that, uh, to me, looking at these different zones. Piggybacks on the Charette and the Master Plan, because we're looking at long-term. What areas do we want to see developed in certain ways?
Right, and that's something we're really hoping for on the Charette, which brings me into the Charette Housing Champions status and everything. We are still working forward on that, Jane and I will be meeting on Tuesday to finish the application. She has got the rough draft of the application done, she's, uh, doing the final version of it. And it has to be in by the thirtieth, so we are on schedule. Anyone who has any training that they have done, please forward that to Jane. The same thing with your board too, please, same thing with you as well. So that, um, we get points for all that, we need a minimum, I believe it's eighty points, and we're at like eighty-five, so we we, we are good, but we need.
Can we just let her know what we did because there was no.
Just, just let her know what you did, that's all all she's asking for.
Do you want us to try to get a certificate? I mean, I don't mind writing to them to say, never get a certificate.
I can't imagine they're gonna require if they don't offer one.
Right, um, they can always go and get the list of attendance for the different things.
But you can watch it after.
Right, and you can watch it afterwards.
They can't. I'm just saying, they can't, they can't enforce that. I mean, they can't unless they're getting it.
Let me talk about that. Is anything from the class that you want to green up?
Um, there were parts that were repetitive, but it was still very good information, and I do want to sort of download it and watch through it again, I I would recommend it. It was very helpful.
Excellent, yeah, download it, send it to everybody, and we'll all watch it.
What class was that?
It was a day-long conference on the zoning board.
Spring Planning Board Conference.
And it really sort of walked through all of the tasks and duties of the planning board members and how to carry them out.
I'll also remind you, remind you that that there is, um, they call them coffee breaks or lunch break training. Some of you I know have taken those, so please forward those to Jane as well. Um, I believe that. I kinda think that we've already done the review of the site plan stuff, but, um, if anyone has anything else that they'd like to add to that at this point, please do. Um, Jane has to type this into, she's, this is the new updated one in your packet. And this is what she, uh, one of the two documents she has to send in to this, for the Housing Champions. Yes, and she'll want your papers back. Um, last order of business. It is on the agenda, it's actually the first thing. All right, I need a nomination for a chair, a vice chair, and a recording secretary for the board. I then will need a nomination for LRP, Lake Region Planning Commission, seat one. Lake Region Planning Commission, seat two, and an alternate for Lake Region Planning Commission. I have spoken with Charlie, and he is willing to talk to, um, two of his boards to come up with one person.
And nominate you for the chair.
We'd like somebody from the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah. It, very good tie-in, I think.
From the economic?
Economic Development Committee. All right.
I don't know if anybody's heard that, but I nominated Kendall as chair.
I have a nomination.
A second.
By Bethany, a second by Tricia, to make myself the chairman. Any other?
No, there was a vote.
No, no, you can say it.
No, 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 I was gonna vote.
Oh, sorry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I voting tonight or am I?
For this, you can, for this you are.
Who are you being nominated for?
Chairman of the Planning Board.
We're sticking him with another roundest chair.
Oh, for this?
Don't worry, I I get my revenge in a minute.
President of the Planning Board?
Chairman.
Chairman.
Okay, sorry. And everyone was unanimous?
Yeah. Um, so I have a nomination for Trish as, um.
Vice chair?
Vice chair, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, I I nominated her, by the way.
You can say. Linda second. My name doesn't need to show up all the time.
Okay. All in favor, was it unanimous?
Aye.
I didn't mean to do, I meant.
Was it unanimous? Yeah.
Yes, it was, all right, now I need a nomination for a person for recording secretary. The recording secretary is the person who signs the milars with me and other official state documents as needed. Nope, that is Linda right now.
I nominate Linda.
For what?
Recording secretary.
Recording secretary, can I just say, I am kind of interested in the Lakes Region planning, so.
Oh, don't worry about that, we got you on that too.
Yeah, I was totally gonna throw your name out there.
Is that a big lift for her to do both?
No.
Is it?
The mi- signing milers is like.
Do you want me to do it?
Do what?
Do you want me to do the ma- the signing and everything like that?
I don't, I don't care, if it's taking minutes, I'm just saying, I'm I'm so.
Cannot take minutes.
Bad at getting them done in time, but I'm putting us in in a bad spot and I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it.
It's just signing documents.
If it's just signing documents, I'm okay with that.
Okay, cool.
Okay, all those in favor of Linda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Lake Region Planning Commission.
I nominate Linda.
Okay, we have Linda for one position.
By who, who nominated her?
I'll do it, Tricia.
Tricia nominated, Bethany seconded.
Donna? You were actually one who I was.
I'm an alternate, so I'm just sitting there, and I'm saying aye.
Can she do?
Yes.
Alternate, can she do it?
Yes, she can.
Not at this time.
No, I honestly, give me time to feel like I actually know what I'm doing.
Well, so I have a, a Lakes Region Planning Commission second person.
Far away from where you all are.
Would you be willing to be an alternate?
All right, so.
Would you, no, 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 would you willing to be a Lakes Region?
Second person?
Oh, great, yeah, Charlie's gonna get.
Charlie will get us the second person.
And then don't we need an alternate as well?
Alternate.
Would you be willing to be the alternate?
For what?
For the Lakes Region Planning Board.
I'll be an alternate for anything.
Okay. Then can I nominate her?
Be the alternate for the Lakes Region Planning Commission. Okay.
Thank you.
So I, um, I do.
When do they meet? Cuz I have scheduled restrictions.
They meet nine times.
You're gonna lose me till June.
They meet, they meet nine times a month, uh, nine times. Nine times a year, hours run about. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So nobody's nominated yet for the second, for the alternate.
Charlie's gonna find one.
Charlie.
The second seat.
Charlie will find the second seat, and I'm gonna nominate, I haven't, I wish he was here.
Tom?
No, John.
John, sorry, can we nominate Tom?
John, what is it, John Thomas?
So I will nominate John Thomas as the alternate for now, we can change that if if he really doesn't wanna do it. Okay, Linda seconded that.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
It's what you get when you don't come.
There is one last position that is needed. It is for the ZBA, the planning board representative to the ZBA, and I am willing to do that.
Thank you, Kendall, I nominate Kendall.
I second.
And we'll unanimously agree.
Aye.
Aye, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, I would do it, but I can't do it.
Yeah, actually gonna show.
Well, obviously you have meetings.
I believe that we are in the compact zones for shots fired right now.
No, 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 the predecessor was great. But, but no, I was just gonna comment that, you know, where this is important, it leaves on between the two.
Well, it's very important, it's extremely important, that's why I'm gonna take.
Can't do it.
Yeah, somebody might, you would be.
No, I can't, why, Sam's on the planning board.
Oh, yeah.
My what?
Oh.
Anyone have any other?
We all know that.
Business to come before the planning board.
No, thank you.
Okay. And which time?
Were you gonna approve the last minutes that run?
I know I'm not.
Okay, you mean that often?
Yes. Um, nineteen fifty-three, I closed the planning board meeting.